Yeah, we did that.
Ready? Good evening. This is City Council called together as a committee of the whole. This is our second budget hearing of the year after the mayoral's budget, the mayoral budget address. It is Thursday, September 25th. It is 5:10 and I will call the meeting to order. As a community of the whole, I am Robert Kavanaugh, Finance Chair, chairing, and would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rathmill.
Councilmember Medavetsky.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmembers Dundon and Murray are absent. Chair Kavanaugh.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. So budget hearings, everyone's edification and just drive into memory, a little bit different. Finance Chair chairs them. We go through the budget page by page and item by item. We have the chairs of each department present their individual budgets, have discussions, questions. We can choose to pass the pages and, and, and close them. Which then requires a different motion to reopen them again later in the process. Or we can choose to leave them open for further discussion and, and commentary and amendment. So we're going to, with that, I'd like to open pages 20 and 21 and invite the city treasurer. Down to present to us.
Can I make a request for future budget hearings? Can we get the page numbers onto the agenda so that everyone who's following along can know ahead of time?
Just discussing that, yeah.
Ah, perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, sir?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I am presenting on the 2026 treasurer's budget. The overall budget increase is $59,460.95.
Can you get the mic a little closer?
I'm sure. How's that? Better?
That's better.
Good. All right. Overall, the budget increase is $59,460.95, 14.07% increase over 2025. Increase mainly consists of the addition of a deputy treasurer position, salary of $53,000. And then the other difference is union negotiate salaries of $6,008.95. Based on my risk assessment of the treasurer's office, I'm requesting the addition of a deputy treasurer for three main reasons. Enhanced separation of duties and cash control, then includes bank deposit, journal postings, treasury report, and then second approval on bill adjustments and anything else that would affect the revenue for the city. Department leadership support. Backup to me when I'm out of the office or working on other projects. And third would be portfolio management, which is really an in-depth review of the existing water accounts for billing accuracy, proper charging and account setup, which would be reviewing any accounts that are inactive and see if they need to be made active. We did find some, some of those that are out there that outlier, so it would be a full review of the existing water sewer portfolio. The other two increases in the budget are travel and training, $200. That would allow for technical training for the staff, whether it be, you know, prior learning or skill path, something to that effect, so that it allows from some training on the technical side. And then envelope and printing expense, because we're now doing shut offs. We are using a significant amount more of envelopes and paper, so that's the other increase. There are no increases in the following items, capex, there's no capital expenditures planned. Office supplies, no change in office supplies. Printing, there was a small increase due to the increased expense, as I mentioned, with envelopes that we use for water sewer shut offs. Parking key, kiosk fees and services, no change in that expense. And then finally, professional services, which is the FBS on the parking ticket side, would also have no change. So that's the, the budget for 2026 for the treasurer's office.
But I have a question about the deputy treasurer position is, how was the salary calculated? Do we expect that to be enough to recruit a solid candidate?
Yeah, good question. Working with Kent in personnel, he was able to do a basic of market analysis assessment. And he feels that from a marketable standpoint, be right in line, be able to attract the right talent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this going to be, is the treasurer position, the deputy treasurer position, is that going to be an appointed position or?
Civil service.
Civil service, okay.
Yes.
What's the, when you're discussing the number of water bills that might be outliers, what type of volume or quantity or?
So what, what I really should say is it's, it's based on having somebody actually go in and really do a real deep dive analysis of the existing water accounts. I mean, we, you know, I do it myself, but to have somebody that would be second to me, would be able to do a deeper, deeper dive. I don't think there's a significant amount of that active inactive, but I think there's an opportunity for revenue generation. Looking at accounts, maybe someone struggling that doesn't fit the water hearing and payment plan, but we could work with them in trying to get paid. So there's, I think there's opportunities in identifying, I'll say, revenue sources in the existing water sewer portfolio.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just. For public mostly. Just to kind of delineate all the functions, the finance department versus the treasurer. Some people hear treasurer and think you're handling all of the fines of the city, but treasurer department here in the city has been, has focused on basically water sewer bill or billing functions and collections and parking. Kiosks and payment of tickets and collections and stuff, correct?
Correct. Right. So, so we, we take in the revenue. And then the finance department are the ones that issue the checks. So we, we're the ones that collect the revenue. So it's water sewer, would be parking ticket. If there's any garbage bag sales over the counter, we take the money in.
And you, or not. Back in the day when my little store sold garbage bags, you also handed all the, the billing for retailers for garbage bags and stuff, but that's.
Working, yeah, we have a partnership. We use WayZero. Correct. So, so we maintain that list of the vendors that sell the bags. I'm actively involved in trying to recruit additional vendors. We added maybe five new vendors last year to the list, but we're responsible for that. Right? Yeah.
For working with me on that.
Welcome.
And I, so one thing we always like to look, talk about during these hearings is, is what, what can we expect looking forward? What is going to change the department? And I, I think I had a couple of words with you about, you know, increasing the ability for, and the kind of advertising and ability and ease of, for online payments and, and, and things like that in the city. I think that's where the future lies.
Sure. So, so the couple of things last year, what we did is we actually updated our, the website, the, for the city, the treasurer's office site. Try to make it a little more user friendly, including as much as we could incorporate changes into the bill pay. It is proprietary part of it, but we're able to enhance it. So it's a little bit easier for people to kind of work through the process and pay. We also are trying to encourage people to use e-bill, which will reduce the number of paper bills that I have to generate and send out. So we're encouraging that on the bill itself, we're advertising that we can do e-bill, which would be electronic bills sent to them rather than paper. And then the, you know, a couple, maybe things we'd like to see is the ability to do auto payment. We have people that have asked to do that. That would, would be something on the wish list. And then taking credit card over the counter would also be another enhancement for the customer experience.
So what kind of percentage of accounts do we have on e-bill? And are we doing anything or should we do anything to encourage it? Like I just got a new cell phone. Verizon's going to give me 10 bucks off a month for doing e-bill instead of regular bill. Is there anything that's municipally like that?
So that, that's a good question. I don't know if I could give you an exact percent. But I can tell you, we promote it both when we're, you know, when somebody's talking to us over the counter. When we have a tenant that wants to be added, we put them on e-bill. And also it is advertised on the physical bill. The messaging refers to e-bill. I'd have to, I'd have to dig in and see if there's any, any incentive that we could provide that would be like a cost benefit analysis to see what, what would make sense.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Any other questions for Larry?
No. I guess, I mean, since blue bags is a big topic and waste zero is a big topic. The cost benefit of that outsourcing, what does that look like if we had, if we were to hypothetically bring that back in-house or?
Are you talking e-bill or?
No, no, way zero, way zero. I'm just.
Yeah.
Just curious, like in terms of what we pay them versus what it would cost us to do in-house.
Yeah, I'd have to really look at that to be accurate. I'm not sure what that would involve them. And Chuck might be able to lend a little bit more to that.
Yeah, I was, oh, sorry. No, 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 no. I was here when it, when it changed. Rachel just mentioned that. But yeah, we can, we can certainly discuss that. I can give you some numbers probably when we do the refuse fund. I can probably work something off if that's your question. I can actually try to see if I can do something.
Yeah, ballpark. It's not, I'm just curious if, if that was appropriate outsourcing or not.
I can say yes, but I'll give you the numbers.
So since you're up here, Chief Fiscal Officer.
All right.
So adding the deputy treasurer position, the treasurer has, has indicated one of the, one of the main reasons is providing this second, second set of eyes, second look, second authorization and, and better physical cash control and such. Is that good justification? Why have we been lacking in that over the years? What, I mean, we haven't had, it's from my understanding, we have not had a deputy treasurer before really in recent memory.
Well, not, not in my 11 hears here, so, but yeah, I, I mean, I, I go along with everything that Larry said. It, we, we have an opportunity because he's not here all the time. He takes days off and everything. And it's nice to have somebody in that office that's, that is, for lack of a better term, in charge. Cause it is at a critical position, because it collects all the money for the city, probably 90% of it. And that he has, there are processes that, and like research items that we could do, but he can't do them all himself. There, there's projects that he could do that could help us determine, you know, what we need to do with like water bills or whatever. So yeah, I think it's needed. I mean, I have an assistant.
And it's just sort of a single point of failure right now. It's, as we know from a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if he's out for a week, somebody has to answer the questions and everything, and it always goes to our department. And I'm already doing double duty as well, so.
Oh, speaking of water bills, did that printer ever get fixed at some point? I know our previous. They were hand feeding in to print water bills. So is that, is that, that's been fixed. All right, great. Cause I was thinking, how many hours is the city spending with someone hand feeding in stuff to print?
So that was actually, that was an easy fix. It just, the way that they're stored, sometimes they stick in. It just involved major fluffing, fanning.
Yeah, I'm glad that was addressed.
So am I.
Now we're on a roll. All right, Councilman Hotchkiss.
Okay, my, I guess I'm just gonna, I'm probably gonna ask every department this, but my. What I'd like to see is that every department has like a multi-year plan. And I think that helps with understanding your needs or like what you're, what you're aiming for. So if you had like a three to five year plan that says to be able to get a better handle on our, our, our billing and clean that up. And then also add credit card services, X, Y, and Z. In the next two years, which is what we want to do, we have to add this person on and bring them on to help us and create that capacity to do projects. I think that'd be really beneficial for me and I assume the rest of council and also every department in kind of what's, what's coming down the road and what. So is, if there is one that exists, maybe some departments have them, some don't, but I think every year at budget season, reviewing those and seeing how, what you have in, what we have in the budget is aligning with those goals is, would be best practice for our financial planning. So I guess it's, it's a comment, but do you have like a plan or a rough outline of?
Yeah, so.
Near term.
Councilman Kavanaugh had sent out, basically what I had put in place and I had presented was more an automation from a, from that perspective. And that's what I talked about e-bill. There's a couple of other things, automatic payment being offered and then card over the counter, which is more of an automation. And then the other part of that would be fully utilized in the municipal system. There's probably certain things that we could use from an efficiency standpoint that we don't use. So that's on me and the deputy treasurer to really dig into that as well and see what else we can do from an automation standpoint. So I'd say the major, what I see, I think from a, from a control perspective, things are in good shape from a control perspective within the department. But I think there's opportunity for automation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so in terms of the automation plan, is that something that, that skillset already exists within the department that you're going to train to or that you're going to hire for within that deputy position?
The skillset's already in the department and I can train to that. But it's a good question. Yeah. So, you know, just to that point, so, you know, bringing a different perspective from corporate America. I think I'm able to identify those opportunities within the department and, and my team reacts very favorably.
So we are down to council people and the clerk has relayed to me a kind of a request that we keep the pages open that we've worked, we're working on tonight. So I'm going to ask for motion to close the pages, but nobody motions, we'll just leave them open. So there are motion to close pages 21, 20, I'm sorry, it's only 20, page 20.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No motion. So I will, we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda.
We didn't ask the one question we normally ask. Usually Councilwoman Middleton usually nails it, which is, was there something in the budget that you, that isn't in there that's on your wish list? Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
And there was no nothing, given that the microphone wasn't on.
Okay. And now city engineer is going to come down and we will start to hear about the engineering department budget. So we will go to page 32, I believe, and open pages 32 and 33.
Good evening, Mr. Lake. Hi.
I just came from a funeral, so I know you're going to cheer me up.
So sorry. Condolences. Thank you for joining us. We could have rearranged the schedule for you. We could have moved things around for you. I'm sorry. I.
We're ready?
We're ready. Yes, go ahead.
All right. We can go through it line by line. And the first one we have is personal services. There is, there is a change there. Including for the deputy engineer position created in 2025. Adjustment to that, since we've had no, no one apply. And I believe there's a change to my salary because I've been here almost five years. My job has been posted for five years. There's not been one application. Sooner or later, I'm going to have to leave. So we need, we need to get it in a range where we can entice other engineers to come.
Can I ask you a question? Like, have you worked with personnel to kind of get that going on what you expect on what?
Yeah, been there several times. When I, I've actually called some engineers to see if they would come. But most of them who would make a good deputy are already making more than I am. So they don't want to come. They have 401Ks. They get bonuses every year. The private market has most of the engineers tied up and they pay them well.
Do you, do you think there's something that we could do to kind of entice an engineer? Like something that, you know, in your field, something we could do here at the city to kind of make it more?
I think the only thing that is going to entice them right now is, is a higher salary.
Okay, so higher than what the city engineer is paying right now?
Yeah, I'm, these numbers are, are good. I'm not sure we're going to attract anybody, even though they are higher than they were last year.
And do you, I'm, I'm sorry to ask a bunch of questions. Do you know what the prerequisites are for, for this job? Like what do they need for it that they?
They need, they need to be a professional engineer with some experience.
Okay.
And hopefully we find somebody who's had municipal experience like I had on my own life. And it makes it much easier for them to come into the city if, if they've had, you know, like village or town experience or know how it works.
Okay. And you, you would probably train them too, to do the job too.
I would.
Mr. Lake, I'm, I'm looking, I'm comparing your notes that you gave us with the actual budget page. And in the budget, it lists a deputy engineer. If, when we get one at 120,000 and your notes listed 112 and change. And the assistant city engineer in the budget is listed 82. And your notes listed 112 and change. And the assistant city engineer in the budget is listed 82, 230. I wonder if something got mixed around maybe. An assistant engineer at, on what you're asking for 90 over here. Do we?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a problem with that salary now and that.
I know I'm reading your notes that, that, uh, you, you have a, we have a senior engineer making less than the assistant city engineer. But it's not correct. I, I don't see a fix for it in the actual budget pages.
Where, so, um, we're asking for that, for council to fix that in the budget. When it, uh, when it says in the notes, uh, adjustment to proposed budget.
Okay. So you would, this is an amendment you would like to the budget.
That's my understanding, right, Ron?
Yes.
Okay.
And the amendment is from 120 to 112 and 82 to 90?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that keeps it balanced, but I would, I mean, I, I think we need to keep the, well, I mean, I guess we can cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah, I think he knows the background and you know, the, an assistant city engineer and the other person in the department that he's been here 50 years, but he doesn't have the responsibility that our assistant city engineer has. So it takes over for me and I include him in everything we do and he needs to be recognized for, for what he does.
Absolutely. Um, did you ever think about training him into?
He's not licensed.
Okay.
So he can't.
Okay. Could we get him to?
I don't know if we could get him to separate all those tests now. He's been out of school quite a while.
Okay. Just wondering.
It would be great if he would.
He has too much real world knowledge to get through the P E exam.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes. He's, he's got the knowledge he needs now rather than the schoolwork.
Sometimes that's better.
I agree.
You know, like hands on, you learn. Not everyone needs that.
Yes.
So I would like to keep the deputy engineer potential position at 120,000. I don't want to lower that, but I'm all for raising the assistant city engineer to 90.
And I'm all for what you just said.
All right. So I would amend, I would motion to amend the budget to, increase the A1, A1440 dot 51000 by, don't do this without your calculator. 7764. Yes. Yes, it was all right. Uh, by $7,764 to make the assistant city engineer position, uh, $90,000 per year.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All right.
Where does the, where does the increase come from? Do we just have to balance it at some point?
It does have to come from somewhere.
But not yet. We'll, we'll find it.
Hey, last year we put, we took, it should come from the contingency.
Right, right.
For right now.
For right now. Do we have anything sitting in contingency right now? I think you started with 25.
We haven't gotten there yet, but yes, there is.
All right. Right.
So it's going to 90,000 for?
Yes. And that would be coming from line, what's the contingency line this year?
One more time, that's 7,000 and what?
$7,764. Increase to a 1440, 51,000.
Okay.
And we will take it from contingency. What's the contingency line?
Chuck. What?
You might as well stay up here.
I should have this memorized.
176.
Yes, it's on, excuse me, it's on page 52.
Okay.
And there's 25,000.
What's the line number?
500, 1990 dot 55000.
Okay.
You said it's page 52? Thank you. We're taking.
All right. So a motion and a second, would you call the roll clerk? Oh, wait, is there any discussion on a motion? No, will the clerk call the roll please?
Councilmember Rathmore.
I.
Councilmember Medavetsky.
I.
Councilmember Hotchkiss. Councilmember Middleton.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Thank you. That is 50.
I guess the discussion would just be that we know we've passed a lot of things, um, in city council relating to outsourcing work to contractors that the work all has to get done one way or another. And if we can recruit in-house talent, it makes it a little bit more sustainable, even though obviously we'll still need to get specialists from outside and all of that. Hopefully this will actually save us some money.
When we do it in-house, the rate is a whole lot cheaper.
Okay. Anything else under personnel, Ron, or do you want to keep going with your line by line?
Uh, let's go with temporary services. There's no change. That just covers one of our inspectors. Overtime. Let me just say a little bit about overtime. You probably don't realize it, but my, my assistant and myself, we work, we're scheduled to work eight hours. We probably work more. But the rest of the people are union, they work seven hours a day. So when a contractor works an eight hour shift, I've got to have them work that extra hour. Now, if the contractor works holidays or other things like that, we backcharge the holiday for, for that overtime. But I have no control over it because they're only scheduled to do seven hours a day. So during the summer, we always have the overtime for the inspectors. Okay. Office equipment, there's not really any change there. Office supplies. There's no change. General operating supplies, there's no change. Printing. We have that, we dropped it a hundred bucks, but that's in there because there's sometimes if our plotter goes down, we would have to go to data flow to print plans for the contractors. So that, that's where we would get it from, to be able to do that. Uniforms, that's pretty much the same. We usually.
So wait, uh, it's, do we need equipment upgrade if we're having to kind of consistently put in, uh, a backup plan to outsource printing?
I don't think it's happening now, but when we got the new plotter a couple of years ago, IT did put money away every year so we could buy a new one. But that was not in our budget. And that would be a great idea to have it back in there.
So what's the technology that would be ideal for us to have a, a, a saving plan to repurchase? What was just so I didn't have a note to make sense?
We really should have a plan for, to replace that plotter every seven to probably every seven years or so. They don't go much beyond that.
I just couldn't, I couldn't hear the word plotter. Now I heard it. Thanks.
Okay. Under uniforms, that's the budget we've had for years and it, it seems to work and we use most of it every year. It's, we haven't expended that much now, but when the winter season comes, that's when they usually get their boots and heavy jackets and things. So we'll be using, we'll be using most of it then. We have a professional service for consulting engineers, which is a small one, and environmental services, which is another small one. We use it, we sometimes do that on a term agreement each year. Cause we don't know exactly what project, what, we have somebody, especially for environmental, we need to do an asbestos survey. We've got them on a yearly contract and whatever the project is, we can just use them.
So around the engineering inspection services, the, the contract we signed, that's under the temporary services earlier, right? That's separate. That's
Yes.
Not professional service. That's that, that guy is that temporary services, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, and these are at, as needed.
Under the technical services, that's what we use for our asphalt testing, our concrete testing. And any other type of testing for the project that we might need to do.
So this seems to have come in pretty significantly in the budget in 2024 and so far pretty under budget in 2025. Um, or are we?
We, we will still be using some, quite a bit more of that.
Okay. Is there a reason it was so low in 2024?
I think in 2024, I, I don't know why it's so low. We should have been using it.
Is there situations where that cost would be in other parts of projects or something, or not having it come out of your direct budget or something? I mean, I don't think we paved any fewer roads necessarily, or made fewer sidewalks in 2024 than we have in other years.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but we, we do test the asphalt when we're putting it on the streets and the concrete for the curves and sidewalks to make sure we get the right mix.
Okay.
And, and we go to the street repairs. That's out because it's now in our capital budget. The same thing for general infrastructure improvements. That's out because it's now in our capital budget. And equipment lease rental, I don't know why it's there because we don't ever have it. It's just always zero. Then we have the equipment, uh, repairs and maintenance. And a lot of that is for the plotter maintenance, but every once in a while, we may have to buy a, a dumpy level or something to, as ours gets old and is in disrepair, or we have to buy some new tape measures or that sort of thing. And then we have travel and training and I can give you an idea of what we use for that. Uh, 2025, we had AutoCAD training for $2,000. We had stormwater center training and some of that my and my, I and my assistant, we do it because we have to have so many hours of training for our MS4 or stormwater systems for DEC to keep track of. So there's a lot of training that we have to do there. Uh, we have to, we have Southern Tier Eight Regional Board Training. We have New York State Water Environmental Association training. We have Central New York WEA training. We have New York Rural Water Association. We have training for four hour erosion sediment control. So all of my people before they can go out on construction have to have that four hours every three years. According to, to DEC. Uh, and we have Empire New York Customer Service Assessments for a hundred bucks.
Sorry to bring it back to the plotter, but, um, is, what impact would it have if instead of having and maintaining a plotter, we just went all the, you know, went entirely with data, data flow or another company to do that with, like, does that, how would that impact your workflow, the cost? Is that something that we've considered?
Everything to data flow?
Yeah. I, I'm just curious as, since we have a maintenance plan and we have to be concerned about reserving money to
If we send everything to data flow, that would be astronomical. That would be
Okay.
20, $30,000 if we did that.
Okay. Thank you.
I suppose the other option would be to just lease it, but I think we got a good deal here.
Thanks.
We have Cornell Local Roads Program, Federal League Workshops and Central New York Regional Planning and Development Board Stormwater Trainings. That was over 2,000 last, last year, this year. And we have American Water Works Association, big, basic laboratory skills and training. So we do have a lot of training that's required just by DEC and OSHA and that sort of thing.
Do you have more, uh, training scheduled for the, the rest of the year? Cause you're about halfway through. Looks like.
Yeah, we're probably about where we should be now. Cause in the fall, we get some more training.
Okay. Thank you.
Then we have our subs dues and memberships. And I can give you an idea of what we have there. We have New York State DEC Conservation Fee for our projects that require a SWIP, which is a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So if we're disturbing more than an acre like we did with a trail behind the Binghamton Plaza, we have to pay DEC a fee every year. And it's a hundred and $10 for every year that that project is open. And so we have one, two, three, we have three or four of those. And then we have the New York Water Environment Federation Membership where we do get a lot of information from them. And there are several of us that belong to that. And that's $350. Uh, we have to pay our, our speedy's permit. That last year, DEC put City of Binghamton, Village of Johnson City and the Suez Treatment Plant under one speedy's permit. So we end up paying our, our share of that.
So my question, how do we fall compared to other cities in terms of owing fees to the DEC? Um, like, do we have some sort of comparison on what is normal amount of expenditure on that versus where we are?
I don't know. These, these are all pretty normal. They're, they're, we're not being surcharged or fined for anything. So these are just standard fees that if we do the work, we have to pay.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so we're under one speedy's permit now, which makes it a little awkward, but we're working through it. None of the three institutions like it, but I guess it makes it easier for DEC. So we get involved in JC stuff and the treatment plant stuff that we didn't used to. So now we all have to agree on, on what each other is doing.
Any questions on pages 32 and 33 for the engineer before we move on to the capital improvement section? I think in terms of looking forward for the department, um, I think you've sort of covered that and discussing, you know, the need for, the need for, uh, a deputy city engineer essentially, and, and kind of planning for somebody else to be around and learning and, and building up your, your, uh, internal skillset in the department, keeping it up to snuff. Um, anything else that the, uh, the department needs looking forward in the next few years? Um,
Anything else we need?
People wise, technology wise, how are we keeping up? Um,
Not, not, not at this time. We were able to get through our work, but it really would help if we had that deputy. That would, that would be a big, a big help. Other than that, I think you've supported us very well.
Sounded like, uh, eventually we're going to need a new plotter. Was that, is there a timeline on that? Like, you estimate?
I would say five years.
Five years.
So, okay. Anyone? All right. So I'd like to open page 203 now and start discussing the,
Close to 20?
206, it's actually 203. Engineering section of capital improvements.
Okay. The first one we have is street reconstruction. And these first few are just our typical budget every year. These lines of support. Our annual infrastructure plan. Funding sources include CHIPS funding as well as bonds. And you can, you can see that the, uh, that the, the street reconstruction, that 2,000 that we have in grants, that comes out of the CHIPS program. The mill and pave, one thousand, one, or one, 2,000, 2 million. One million on the mill and pave comes out of CHIPS. And the sidewalks and the ADA handicap, that 1.3 million comes out of CHIPS. And then for water lines, I reversed the water and sewer this year because we were running out of water line money and, or out of sewer line money. We had plenty of water. So I kind of reversed them. But when we get into the streets, we never know how much on each street we're actually going to spend. But we try to plan if it's old or we try to replace it. But then sometimes we just run into conflicts. And so it takes a lot to do this mill and pave work. If we fix the streets and take care of the utilities, so we don't have to come back there for years. And that's been the program to, as we surface the streets, because we don't want to go back there for five to 10 years. We want to make sure that the infrastructure underground is in good shape. And that's what we do.
Are we keeping up? When we look at the, you know, the what's my who's the roadblocks data?
Here's, here's, here's what I can tell you from my experience here. Each year, we try to do as many streets as we can. And under the old administration, all the easy streets were done because you could get more streets and you could show more mileage. Well, all that cherry picking is gone. And now what we're fighting every year is we have the streets that need the most. So, and, and if you would give us more money for streets, I'd appreciate it. But I think this is at least the minimum we need to keep going and have a chance at keeping the city in repair.
I guess what I'm asking, is that, so just using that, again, the robotics data, you know, that, you know, you get the kind of heat map of quality of streets. Are we, are we chipping away? Are we seeing less red and orange every year? Or are we just keeping up? Or are we making any gains on quality of streets? And I appreciate the fact that there's been some very challenging ones, kind of in the hopper.
And that data only captures the surface level.
Right. Yes.
But it's kind of hard to answer because there's a twofold thing here that we're required by DEC to where we can to separate the storm and sanitary. So in some of these streets, we have a whole lot of extra work to do. And we have to run a storm main where normally we just replaced the sewer line or the water line. So I guess Josh will be up next, and maybe he has something to say about this. But he takes what we consider to be the worst streets, and we try to get through those as many of them as we can. So I, I think we're holding our own. I don't know if we're ever going to come to a point where, yay, this year, we don't have anything to do. And it's not going to happen. But we're getting a number of miles every year. And we don't plan on going back and touching any of those for five to 10 years.
Okay. Thank you. Next to on that would be, I think pump station rehab is the next item.
There are, there are several pump stations that DEC had asked us to work on going back, I think around 2021 or so. And we never got a chance to do it. And I think we should now. But there's Charles Street, Cherry Lindsey Park, Delavan Avenue, Elm Street, Frederick Street, Front Street, Lake Avenue, Olmsted Street, Pennsylvania Avenue. So those are the ones that DEC says we need to work on. So I know that what I have in the budget here is not near enough to do all those. But I'd like to try to tackle one or two of them this, next year if I can.
So is this, actual pumps, the physical buildings they're in, the piping, the little bit of everything?
Some of each. Some of them need to be replaced totally. Some of them just need to be rehabbed.
Okay. And then we're getting into all the lines that have grant money and stuff attached. Do you want to go through those?
Yes. Shenango Street Reconstruction would be from Court Street to Lewis Street. And that will probably take some time. And we're looking for some grant money for that. And I think the mayor may have been promised some, but I'm not sure. But that's, street is, needs some work. And that's one of our major streets. And we should, we should get that taken care of. Then we have Ball Avenue Design and Construction. That's an area that comes down 11. And it comes from Port Dick. And, and we get DOT drainage coming there and it hits it right at the Dickinson City Line. And it comes underneath the Brandywine and then goes on out Ball Avenue to the river. We've had that pipe televised and checked. And we have a preliminary engineering report that tells us what we need to do there.
Do we have any idea how this, does this interface at all with the county's Brandywine District, whatever they're calling it, redevelopment and planning?
I think we're on our own.
Okay.
I've talked to DOT and I've got nothing. So since it's on us, on our property, we're going to have to do it. But it doesn't need to be replaced and reworked.
You skipped Clinton Street Reconstruction.
Skip which one?
Clinton Street was the first one. We started with Shenango, but Clinton Streets, so that's, the 5 million grant is DRI money, I think. Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's where public infrastructure upgrades, including street reconstruction, street scape improvements, lighting, to coincide with our downtown revitalization, revitalization initiative improvements. So that's, that's for all of that.
And Memorial Bridge?
Memorial Bridge. We did the preliminary engineering and stuff on that. We got approved by DOT for, for the grant you see there, which is, which is great. We were able to get some of that grant money for, because of safety, safety reasons. And as we change the configuration of the bridge, there'll be better pedestrian and better bicycle movement across that. So we did get some points for, for safety in doing that. We're eligible to do the design in '26. And I think we'll do the construction in '27.
So that's a great point. I, when I looked at this section, and I, the total amount of projects here is significant.
Yes.
And I was a little nervous about even the city's share of, even though there's significant sources of, outside sources of funding coming in, the city commitment across these projects is still a lot. But I think you just hit a point which is important, is that even though we're looking at these and authorizing these projects and authorizing spend on these, many of these are not actually going to go out for financing, for funding for one to two to possibly three years.
That's correct.
So
I believe Chuck doesn't go for funding until I'm ready to spend it.
It was just a big scary number, all in one page. That's all.
Yeah. So then that brings us to Chamberlain Creek. The city owns part of the creek on the east side there. And there's a couple garages that are ready to fall into the creek. And I've been working with Brim County Soil and Water. And we need to do some showering to that stream to protect those structures.
Okay. And then finally, is the kind of just the petrol engineering design?
Engineering design. And that, we have to use a lot of it because, as you know, most of our funding is reimbursable. So we have to spend it and then we can get it back. But that takes care of most of our, most of our designs for the year. Sometimes we get a project that we didn't know we were going to have. And the money to, to, for engineering would come out of there.
So of the listed large capital projects with matches, which ones do you think will actually get off the ground in 2026?
You said that again?
So of the, the Clinton Street, Shenango Street, Ball Ave, Memorial Bridge, Chamberlain Creek, what, which ones of those do you think actually be, any of those breaking ground in 2026, I should say?
We, we probably, depends on if we get the grant we're hoping for on Shenango Street. We might be able to break ground midsummer, late fall. Memorial Bridge, of course, that's just going to be designed next year. So we won't break ground on that. Ball Avenue, I wouldn't like to, if we can fund that, because that's been a, it's been a nightmare every year. If it, if it, for whatever reason, it brings a lot of big rocks and stuff down and they come underneath the highway. And then they fill up our structure right on our side. And when that happens and we have a heavy downpour, then it overflows and it goes down through the construction offices that are right there. So it's something we, we really should do. And then there's, some of it, as it gets closer to the river, is not in good shape. And, and we really do need to fix it. And I would think that we, if we had to go ahead, we could start that next year. Yeah.
So on the Ball Ave project round, what's the 3 million outside funding is, who's, what grant or what, what agency is that coming from?
I believe that we were trying for a WIA grant.
Who? I'm sorry.
A WIA grant.
A WIA?
Yeah. That's one of the
Don't remember what that is.
One of EFCs.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the engineering section of the capital lines? This is big dollars.
Does it include the planning line or just through?
No, no, the planning line is planning department.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is just the, the lines in engineering? Okay. All right. So you do have fees on page 206, Ron, engineering department. But I didn't see any changes this year. Is that correct?
Fees? No, we have no fee changes.
All right. We did change some fees, I think, last year, didn't we?
We did.
And how is that? I'm sorry to put you on the spot. And I'm not sorry to put you on the spot. This is the putting on the spot time. How have those been working out? I'm guessing reasonably well, if you're not asking for any more changes, but
They've been working out well. And it does help a little bit to cover some of our expenses.
Okay. And then you know what I'm going to bother you about, right? The utility poll law?
We will, we will have Mr. Ed working on that this winter.
I've been waiting patiently for outdoor stuff to, you know, wind down a little bit. So, all right.
We've, we've got to get after them. We've notified some of them that they need to remove poles. But we'll get into it pretty good this winter.
All right. Thank you.
I, I guess the, I think a lot of people have been talking about Main Street. Is that just, is that going to fall under the regular generic, like, street reconstruction? Or?
So, well, we're not going to, I'm, I'm, that was, that, Main Street Reconstruction has already been authorized and funded under previous year's budgets. So, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
We probably won't finish Main Street this year, but early next year, but that's all funded.
Thank you.
I mean, I guess there's been a lot of discussion about like groundbreaking and stuff. And when things, maybe it would be helpful to hear what past projects are actually going to be worked on this year. Because I think it's probably confusing for people following along.
The Sixth Ward Project went out to bid. That's that South Side Sewer Interceptor. That is under construction now. The last street work that just went out is Leroy and Helen Street. We've got some work going on there.
I just got the question today. What the heck are they doing ripping up Leroy Street so late in the season?
Yeah. If I got a chance to get started on it, it'll be less painful than having it for a whole.
It's painful to me in the morning. It's painful. I have to take my daughter to school that way. It's painful to me.
That's tough.
So I'm wondering if it's maybe a good idea to just get a regular, sorry to give you homework, Ron, to maybe just a regular work session, get a, maybe just a list or a chart with kind of past capital projects and where, where they're at as far as completion and stuff. Because you, I mean, you just rattled off a bunch of them. But we also have, what, Deco District second phase or third phase going on and all that stuff. So
Okay. Glad to do it.
That'd be good to get just kind of a general update. Yeah.
Okay.
Because you're not busy at all, right? I know. But yeah, I think that would be helpful and nice. Thank you.
Just invite me. I'll be here.
We'll do that. Anything else, friends? No. Thank you very much, Mr. White. Have a good evening. And again, we're trying to leave these pages open. So I'll ask for a motion to close pages 32, 33, 203, and 206. Engineering items only on 203 and 206. And I don't want a motion, but I'm asking. Okay. So we're going to leave those pages open. And how's everyone doing as far as thirst and bodily needs? Are we okay? Press on? All right. So, the, oh, we got a tag team coming down. All right. Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. Good evening, Mr. Paludi. All right. Some notes. Nice. All right. This is where I'm going to screw up because you have pages all over the place. So Public Works Administration first. We're going to open page 36 first. And would you like to kind of give us your overview and then take us through the line by line?
All right. I'll give you an overview. I'll just kind of go through where there's changes. In the administration lines, we're going to do a little bit of an increase in office supplies, just so, you know, paper, everything we need in the office, toners, things like that. City Hall Plan of Operations that covers our sanitation, engineer, maintenance and stuff at City Hall. There's going to be an increase on electricity based on what we've seen in the past. Building equipment and maintenance, there's going to be an increase on that just because City Hall is getting older. We need to start doing some upgrades in there and just to maintain the basic stuff that we have now. Court improvements, that's just anticipated and that actually gets reimbursed to us. So that's kind of just an estimate. And when they do that work, we get that money back from the courts after it's been completed.
They, yeah, do you have, I mean, you don't actually kind of know what they are anticipating, asking for in the next year or what, or?
The courts like to call and say, we need this, we need that. Can we get this? And we do our best to oblige them as fast as we can. And that money just gets reimbursed to us after the work is finished, whether it's carpets or blinds or whatever it is. And that money just gets reimbursed to us after the work is finished, whether it's carpets or blinds or whatever it is they want up there.
Okay. So on the electricity, we all sat through many discussions about the proposed Siemens contract to try and reduce our electricity bills. Obviously, that did not pass, but one of the discussions that came up out of that was if we could get on some sort of uh, schedule or plan for light internally, um, using city employees to uh, update some of our lighting to try and get capture some of those gains. I don't know how long of a period it would need to happen in order to to get that work is is any of that work scheduled or discussed on trying to see what we can do in-house on moving towards more energy efficiency?
So energy efficiency, obviously, a pretty big thing nowadays. Um, we're we're moving forward when we do switch bulbs and stuff like that. We go to a high efficiency LED bulb now. As we, we kind of just fix it as we go, as we see things that need changed out, we change them up with the more efficient stuff. As far as going through and just taking stuff out and completely replacing, no, I don't have anything set up for that yet. But as we move forward and things start to age out and we replace them, then yeah, obviously, we're gonna try and do whatever we can for the most bang for our bucks, even if it's a little more upfront, if it's gonna save us in the energy room later, that's what we're gonna do.
Do we have a a sense or is there any kind of record keeping on at what point we will have fully switched over or where we're at in that transition process? Without additional manpower, additional internal budget?
I I don't have the answer for you on that right now. I can go through and see what I have and I can get back to you on that if you want.
Is there a I know this came up, came up last year with like the different buildings that the city owns. Are they? I know some of them are NICEg. I think some of them are, we're still on Constellation. Has there been any like evaluation of um, kind of looking for different energy suppliers that aren't NICEg because there's kind of an anticipated rate hike coming?
So when it comes to stuff like that, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Robinson on that one. Um, when it comes to paying the bills and who gets the money, he kind of works that.
Gotcha.
Um, we're still under the Constellation contract till the end of twenty twenty six. So that is
Just for City Hall or is that?
No, that's that's citywide.
Okay.
Yeah. So then, yeah, and then NICEg is the other part.
The other part being all the the light, the streetlights?
Say that again?
Now, now you're confusing me. So
Constellation is our supplier.
Okay.
And then the what do you call it?
Delivery.
The delivery is by NICEg, yes. So, um, the LED lights for the streets are both. I mean, everything is is both throughout the city.
Okay.
We have two bills for basically every every meter.
Thanks.
Uh, that'll take me through City Hall. Uh, move on to Central Garage, A sixteen forty. Um, obviously, you guys know how much I love my vehicles. And how expensive they are. So obviously, everyone knows how the world is working right now. Vehicles, vehicle parts, it's it's expensive. The costs just keep going up and up and up. And uh, based on what I see coming, I've raised up a little bit for the rising cost on that. Gasoline, I believe that with the new fuel system management that we have now and along with Chuck, that we can take that down a little bit now because we have a better grasp on what we're using, how we're using it and when we're using it. Uh, electricity costs. Again, it's just based on usage, so we're we're just guessing at an increase because electricity always going up, not coming down.
With the with the gasoline, um, so is it the idea that we're you know, certain times of the year, gas is cheaper, we're like, we're trying to like game it out a little bit more because we know both when costs are gonna be lower and about how much we're using and playing that or I I want to know a little bit more about
It depends upon when the tanks get empty. That's when we have to order fuel. So it's whatever the cost is at that day. It fluctuates.
Okay.
Um, basically on a daily, much of daily basis.
I get the emails sometimes, two and three times a day.
Yeah.
So I'm I'm just curious a little bit more when you mentioned the fuel system management.
What the fuel
What is that?
Yeah, the fuel system management went online last year, if you remember in April. In before, for the two, two years prior to that, we were estimating bills based on the the previous system. So, um, and we were just using a one percentage for each department at that time, which was two years ago. There was no way to manage the percentages. Moving forward, once the transportation system came online, we now have basically a year or so worth of data to estimate a fire department uses this much cash in a year.
Okay.
It's all by department and by vehicle. So we know
So you know how much everyone's actually using and you're able to bill it back correctly to the right department. Okay.
So that
I I was envisioning, uh, you know, like I do, I save my points when I'm at Y's and then I run my tank all the way down to E and then I buy, you know, buy low.
No, we we know it's pretty much exactly
It's not as it's that we haven't mastered that that part of the ultra couponing.
No, but we'll issue the the wise cards to everybody soon. Joking.
Josh, we we I'm not sure if we skipped over equipment. May I ask a question about equipment?
Go ahead.
So the equipment line that just over fifty five hundred expended in twenty twenty four bumped it up over six grand to twelve. It's still at twelve. We've only expended, I mean, under thirteen hundred. Is there a can you help me understand why twelve grand would be needed if that's not what's been expended in the recent past? For equipment?
So the equipment in Central Garage has been holding very well. It's it's starting to age.
Don't jinx us.
Pardon me?
Don't jinx us.
No. Yeah, yeah. Um, so we've kind of just left it alone, but I want to anticipate problems coming.
Is there, is there
And again, I don't, I'm sorry.
Is there a specific high dollar items there that we are there lifts or or tire balancers? I don't exactly know what's over there.
I don't want to say it, but our uh, our air system for all the tools is really starting to act up. The lifts, they're not super old, but they're getting to their point where they're gonna need either high maintenance or or to change out here in the next year or so. Um, but like anything else, you could put something on there and then click, click. And a lift is not something you play with. It either gets repaired or you replace it because somebody can get really hurt really fast.
Those are good things to flag for us in thinking about, you know, what could be coming down the pike?
Yes.
Okay, um, I wanted to actually skip back to the personnel line for Central Garage, uh, which is jumping from two ninety five to four twenty, so we have a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar increase. What has what personnel have shifted around or what's the story behind that?
So we've had a really hard time finding mechanics. We were down for quite a while. We actually, uh, we've had one position that's been unfunded for a while because we couldn't find anyone to fill it. We have recently found mechanics to fill the positions.
Thanks. I'm trying. So, um, has the sal so the salary has, I'm in terms of the the timeline of things, you you do a job posting, there is an amount where are these people being hired at the amount of the posting? Or is this a increase on the amount after the interviewing process?
So it it just depends on the type of experience you have and and what you know and what you don't. There are times we hire people at a a higher rate because they have experience or or a special skill set that we need right away. If you don't have that, we start you at the lower end and make you work up towards that that higher rate.
Yeah, I just, it's one of those things that I've been thinking about, like, how do we advertise these things? Because a number of times we've kind of hired people and then increased the salaries dramatically and then you have to wonder would other qualified people have applied had we advertised it at that higher rate? Um, and therefore we've kind of excluded people from applying by by having, and I I know that the number that we put is based on the budget we have, so until it's approved, I I don't know how we fix that process, but I feel like it's not a really I know as if I were a job seeker, I wouldn't think if I were applying for a government job that I could get paid more than what was posted. And therefore I would be looking at that in my decision making. Um, and I know that a number of times we've adjusted that, which makes me feel like the people that are applying for this are aware of the fact that they can do that, whereas most people would be unaware of that. Um, and I don't exactly know it because I understand that you have to advertise based on what's budgeted for. So you're kind of restricted in how you advertise it. But at the same time, I don't know how we communicate that there's opportunity to go through council and the mayor's office to
It's also a union, it's all a union negotiated too. So you can't just have one guy making this much and another guy making this much. It all has to be a level playing field.
Okay. So in this case, all of the adjustments are related to union contract negotiations. Okay.
All, yeah, all of this is union plus the a lot of the increases are union raises.
Non-union related ones where we've had to adjust after the fact. Which is understandable. You get a good candidate, you want to keep them, but at the same time, the fairness aspect.
So Chuck, are we are we on pace? Are we gonna be over budget in twenty twenty five now that these positions are filled? Are we, are we gonna have to look at, are we gonna be looking at budget amendment in the last quarter for?
Not for, no, I don't, not for salaries.
Okay. Not for salaries, making me ask for something else.
I'll I'll wait for my my time.
All right. So let's see, Josh, we left off Central Garage, right? So move on to Signals.
Okay, Signals, um, overtime and signals, um, obviously, there's union raises this year, so that's factored into all the overtime. As everyone here knows, especially the clerk's office, because I'm down there quite often talking to them about all the events we have around town. When it comes to signals and confined jobs for overtime, uh, I have to have dispatchers in. I have to have sometimes electricians in for bigger events like Luma or Blues on the Bridge and they are here all day and all night until those events wrap up. When the water shop has a water main break, have to have a dispatcher in that comes out of my budget for that. That comes out of the Signals and Combined Shop budget for that. When the snow is coming down, those guys are in for overtime. Uh, basically anytime that I, there are guys in working some sort of overtime, we have a dispatcher there. So if they run into a problem, they can pick up a radio and go, hey, this is happening. I need I need this, this or this, or I need approval from a commissioner or before I just move forward in doing something. Uh, so whether it's an event, a water main break or just a there's a signal out on Court and Main that needs adjusted. We we have a dispatcher in to uh to supplement those guys. Uh, traffic safety signs, as everyone knows, we have the new sign machine and we are pumping out signs left and right. Just increasing that a little bit because the materials for that machine, the price goes up on those. Uh, and they're they're kind of hard to get. They take a long time to come in. So we'd like to order a bunch, have them stockpiled. And that way we're not waiting on stuff to come back. I'd like to have it when we get low, reorder. That way we have a a rotating stock.
Gonna ask, I mean, in view of that, is this is this line enough? Uh, I know we adjusted we adjusted up to fifty thousand this year. Have you gotten enough back stock in that?
I think we've, we're trimming it out a little bit. I think we should be good with this. I think. Like I said, it's it's our first real year with this machine. We're we're doing a lot of signs with it. Um, there was a little bit of a learning curve with it, so I think we'll use less material now that we know how the machine actually works and how much material each thing takes and things like that. And then electricity, we've we've been through that. It's the same thing for their shop as it would be for anywhere else?
We discussed last year the idea of trying to have a little bit better visibility on the events and the cost of events. Um, and I it doesn't exactly fit this format. I don't know if anyone else remembers that. But yeah, so I mean, we're starting to kind of hear about, you know, it's because it's in all these different budget lines and it again, not not making a statement against public events, love public events. But it's hard to kind of wrap our heads around what the actual contribution of support from the city is on these on these events, um, because it's scattered across so many lines. So, uh, I'm just putting that floating that out there is the first time we've already started discussing um, the cost of some of these really stellar events we have.
You could, thank you, guys. Well, you really do a good job.
I appreciate that. The guys will like to hear that.
Thank you. Under your leadership, though, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So that was thirty six to forty five. Then we're gonna jump to road maintenance, I think, is the next, your next chunk, which is seventy seven and seventy eight in the budget. And then snow seventy nine. That's the next one. So seventy seven, seventy eight, seventy nine.
All right, maintenance of roads. Um, my bullet points on this are gonna be the Personnel Service line. Um, we're gonna add a position of, uh, I'm sure everyone's met Vince walking around downtown. His his main job is to do the downtown corridor. Um, he picks up litter, sweeps up and just kind of basically make sure we're neat and tidy in our business district downtown. We're gonna add a position to add Clinton Street to the mix of that, and we're gonna expand it up Main Street a little bit too. So it's not just this little hub downtown. We're gonna push out towards Clinton Street and up Main Street a little bit.
You know, I'm gonna ask about South Washington.
South Wash?
Yeah, because we're, yeah, we're, we're definitely need cleanup and assistance over in the business district, you know, jumps the river.
I don't have a problem. Anybody going over the bridge, we can definitely talk about that. So that's the the Personal Service line.
I know that, um, just really quick, I know that Clinton Street, there's a few owners that have businesses over there and they sometimes um, complain about the trash there, so.
Clinton Street is is very, it's, we have some people over there that give us problems. Um, we do the best we can to make sure they're getting tagged and fined and and taken care of as best we can. But they just don't seem to understand the assignment and they're not, the fines are just starting to get I think we're gonna get to a point here pretty soon where the actual owners are gonna understand that this is not going away. We're we're gonna keep fighting you until you abide to the rules that everyone else on the street is. Uh, again, this new position is definitely gonna help with that and there'll be someone there, you know, pretty much daily to kind of keep an eye on it and and get at it. Where right now we only have limited staff to, we get there as much as we can. Where this guy's gonna be there every day keeping an eye on it. Moving down, uh, overtime for maintenance of roads. Moving down, overtime for maintenance of roads.
Alright, Josh. The, so downtown, Vince, downtown guy, is he mostly on foot? Is this Clinton Street, new Clinton Street person gonna need vehicle? How is that, how is, what's the support structure for these guys now?
So right now they have a vehicle that they keep a, you know, a couple of things in. It's, it's typically a truck or a small type of SUV. They keep basic hand tools in there. And when they have something that's larger, what they'll do is they'll get on the radio or the phone and they'll call our trouble truck, two eighteen, which handles all the random things that come up during the day, like dead animals, things like that. And go, hey, I got a large pile of this over here. Can you meet me, help me? We'll get it in the truck real quick. They meet up with them, they take care of it like that. If, if they ever need anything else, it's only a phone call away. We get a dump truck to them or whatever they need.
So I guess, uh, process wise, if I want beyond just me throwing it out there that businesses on South Washington, I'd like to be included as an extension of downtown. I think people feel that that business district is an extension of the downtown business district. How, how do I formally request that get into the job description or the job responsibilities? Or how, how do I formally make that request rather than just kind of?
Send me an email, let me know what your, your vision for it is and I can find a way to work it out. And, and obviously I want all the business districts to be clean and safe and look beautiful for people to come in and spend money and, and earn tax revenue for everybody there. So if that's something you want to do, I'm sure I could work it out.
Thank you.
Anything you want to highlight under road maintenance or do you want to move on to snow? You had some more notes, I think, about.
Keeping the maintenance of roads, overtime increase there, that's just contractual again. When I talk about overtime for my guys and we, we go through different departments, uh, when it comes to, like, example, we had that big storm this year where, uh, all the trees and stuff came down. That's all hands on deck for stuff like that. So I call the sanitation department in, I call the streets department in for that too. And any overtime that's, that comes up also is also union contracted. It has to go by seniority on a rotating list. So just because I have guys coming in to pick up some garbage, that doesn't necessarily mean it's not gonna be a streets guy that comes in to do it on the overtime, because it's a rotating list between your, your citywide seniority.
Which is fair, fair.
Yeah.
So it's not just giving it to someone.
Right.
I had a question about sanitation. So I had a few of my constituents reached out to me regarding making it, so, uh, so people, when they throw out their trash, they just leave it out. And sometimes animals get into it and, um, different things. Constituent asked if maybe we could do something where we could make it mandatory that people put. I know it's already on there, like it's in.
Yes, it is.
It is, it's already, it's already on there, but is there a way we can enforce that through, um, through sanitation? Just something so that way, cause if it's out like that, especially around like when the kids leave and, you know, we have student housing, there's like forty bags and then like in different areas, even people who don't live here, they don't know how to really throw out the trash properly or they just throw it and they leave it. And, you know, we only collect once a week, so is there a way we can enforce that? And if we could, would that be, would that be, uh, issue with your guys and sanitation?
So it's very difficult to police the whole city after we've been somewhere like on a Tuesday, for example, we're south on Tuesday. After we go by there now, do we try to go by and take a ride and see stuff and tag it? And, and make sure it gets taken care of properly? Yeah, absolutely we do. But can we do that on every single street, on every side of town? It, it's just really not feasible to do that. We try to. If, if a resident has a problem and calls in, absolutely, I've, I'll personally go and tag it if that's, if that's what needs to happen. Hadassas had issues like this before, uh, talking about making it mandatory to, to put things in cans. Could, could it be done? I'm, I'm not gonna tell you no, it's, it's definitely possible to enforce it.
I know it's on there. I just wanna see if like we did like a campaign enforcing it, would that affect your guys? Like as far as like your time, I know you guys are on like a time schedule on how you do things. Would that affect your, would, would that affect you in any way?
It would make things a little more difficult because you can't just, you, you're actually dumping cans and everybody wants their cans set back up nice right where it was. So, you know, we don't want to be throwing stuff, trying to keep up. Would, would it increase our timeframes a little bit? Yes. Could we, could we work with it? I'd, I'd have to try it and see. I don't want to tell you yes and, and have it fail. And I don't want to tell you no and, and not even try. But if we could, I think it's just, we need to make awareness of it would probably be a better thing.
Okay. If, if people understood. You're, you're gonna reach out before the mailer goes out to make sure that we're including that language in the annual mailer.
Okay, that'd be good.
That it is encouraged. I mean, a lot of people, and one of the issues we run against, up against is that people don't know that it's allowed. So before we even get to the enforcing against people who aren't, aren't doing it. I'm just, I mean, I didn't, when I moved to Binghamton, I didn't know from looking at the neighbors that I could put my trash in a trash can. And I just, I would have to go out every week and pick up all the animals ripping my trash bags apart. And then at some point I realized I could, I was legally allowed to put it in a trash can. So letting people know that they are legally allowed to put their trash in a closed trash bag so that they're not picking up after raccoons is a, is a good kind of, I think, first step. And you promised me this year, I'll get to review the mailer before it goes out.
Yes, just let me know about that too, cause I'll educate people on it.
And I had a kind of different type of complaint that I got. I had a constituent reach out to me who is frustrated because she always puts her trash out on the right night. She was, said, okay, I pay for the mailer that goes out to all the residents, right, as a taxpayer, paying for the mailer. I'm noting it in my calendar, right? The neighbors aren't and they're frustrated, express frustration that they're paying for two rounds of trash pickup in their neighborhood because their neighbors aren't doing trash on the appropriate night when there's a holiday. And I, I said I would bring it up to him budget season. And try and understand the, the cost of the fact that people aren't, um, you know, and she was like, well, why, why bother with the mailer? If you're gonna send two trucks anyway, that was.
So I, I, I'm pretty sure I know the street you're talking about. Now, if the bags are getting tagged, they are paying extra to have us come and remove them. So the homeowner is paying the fee on that. So it's not just, they're not getting a double pickup. They're, you're, they're getting their original pickup, yes. But when, when something is tagged and we go back over and get it again, they're receiving a, at least a fifty dollar fine for that.
And I know this might seem tedious. Is it possible for you to like email us all, like, or something? Like maybe we could put out a blast on our like social media pages. I'm like, hey, trash is being picked up. I don't know if you know Doug Baker, he's amazing. He lives in my district. He always puts out like to like people on his page, hey, trash is gonna be picked up at this time or this day. Or like, I mean, we, we all know, but sometimes we forget. But if there's like something like you can just like slip us an email, like kind of like all to counsel, like, hey.
I was gonna say, you're pretty good about reposting and I repost from the, from the government page.
Yes, like if we could, like, you know, yeah, just.
Most of my guys that work in the sanitation department, we'll post it all over their social media. Hey, everybody, just a heads up, it's, it's Labor Day, so there's no yard waste this week. And we're gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a double next week, so please be patient as we, you know, do this. Or if it's a, an odd holiday like, like Juneteenth where we move everything, there's no yard waste. Everything moves a day forward until this day. They're real good about doing that, but I can absolutely send an email.
Yeah, that would be great.
Everybody can get it out on their socia's and, and, and stuff like that.
That'd be great, kind of, that might help save like everyone, cause I know everyone's usually like scrambling. They're like, oh, I don't know, they forget.
You'd start driving down the street and you see the one neighbor that's reliable and then you drive.
That's, that's how I always know the people in my neighborhood, they're really good.
So I, not to be nitpicky and, and creepy, but I'm, I'm gonna try and make sure I get out and look for tags on, on bags before the double pickup. Cause it, it seems pretty consistent in the south side that we have, uh, double pickup. And it seems like a large number of houses are getting it. And I don't, I have not personally observed an attack, a tag. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out there and look for them though.
I'll have a conversation with you later about it. I think I know what you're talking about and there's, there's a little more to it than, than what they're telling you, I think.
Thank you.
Moving forward on maintenance of roads now? Okay. Equipment lease and rental, um, this decrease is because we were leasing a roller last year. And we actually liked it so much that we purchased the, purchased it. And we don't need that much money in the line anymore because we now have one. But I still like to have a little bit of money in that line for when and if something breaks down and we need to have it rented.
I'm sorry, Josh, which line was that?
The equipment lease and rental line?
It's actually the same as, we, we reduced it or we used money somewhere else this year. It's only went down to twenty-five hundred dollars to seventy-five hundred from the original last year's budget, so. It matches our adjusted budget for this year.
Right.
But it's a decrease from the proposed last year or the adopted last year. Okay. Oh, you skipped over, uh, the crack ceiling program.
Professional services.
Yeah.
I want to add a little bit of money to that. I'd like to do more crack ceiling than we're currently doing right now. And I wanna increase our weed prevention control through, uh, like I said, we're, we're gonna move outward a little bit. I would like to do a little bit on the, uh, Clinton Street area for that too.
This is like sprayed pesticide?
Yes.
Like a long rotor, of long roadways and stuff?
Yes.
I would strongly support that. I, I said I would strongly support that. We have, it seems like we have, especially, I don't know why, maybe it's just more noticeable. But, but some of the places where the, uh, the red fake brick stamped concrete's been put in, they seem particularly prone to weeds for some reason.
Yes, um, it's, it's definitely something that, that it, it looks terrible and it's something I'm trying to prevent for here.
Um, and but this, using an, an outside contractor, going this route is going this route to root out the weed problem. A, a preferred method for you rather than trying to do more in-house or bring somebody else in-house? It's, it's not another whole job or, or is it something that your new street maintainer?
Um, this, this is something I'd like to have, uh, professionals do. The parks department has enough on their plate already trying to keep up with, they need to keep up with. So I'm just looking to have, uh, I believe we have True Green do it. They do a very nice job. And I'd just like to expand what they're already doing into this other quarter.
Part of it is depending on what they're using to spray, there's licensure requirements.
Any other question before we move on to snow? Okay, so seventy-nine now. Anything you want to call it on this page?
Snow removal. So bullet points for this is gonna be, uh, the overtime for DPW snow removal. Obviously, you never know what we're gonna get. I hope for zero. And, and we just do the best we can to get the guys in, get the snow removed, get everybody back home and get home. But I can never really give you an actual what we're gonna get because mother nature decides that for me. Sand salt, same thing, just a slight increase. Just, I think salt's going up just a little bit this year. And I'm, again, I have to, I just have to guess on what we're gonna need. I hope we don't have the same problems we had last year with the salt. That's pretty much it for snow removal.
Do we, is this part of the, um, the, the ramp, part of the parking ramps, salt?
No.
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
I guess that's a, almost, is that a Chuck question in terms of are we both buying this with our, our ramps salt or is that separate purchase?
You're, you're asking if the ramps, it can buy off the OGS contract?
Yeah.
Yes, they can.
I, I also don't think we should use salt in those. If there's a different, cause of the way it interacts with concrete. It's like if we want to increase the longevity of our, ramps that we just paid for and constructed, I don't know if salt is the best tool. Yeah, I don't know. It's something I think about when we have brand new infrastructure. So that's why I bring it up.
Sanitation, I think, would be next, which is one oh one.
Yep, sanitation. Again, overtime increase to the union contract. These guys, they, it's for the events, they're in on the weekend, uh, whenever something comes about. Just basic overtime for them as usual. Uniforms, again, a little bit of an increase, it's all contractual.
Speaking of overtime, though, we, we were budget fifty thousand, we've adjusted to seventy and you're asking for sixty. So is there a reason it was a, we, we don't need that bump, the, the full bump next year?
No, this year we had that, that nasty storm come out of nowhere. And I had hundreds of hours of overtime for both the streets and the sanitation because everybody just showed up to, to bang that out as fast as we could. So I'm really hoping we don't have to do that again.
Okay. So next we go to your capital lines, which is going to be two oh six-ish, I'm guessing. That's, no, that's fee, sorry, two oh three-ish. There we go, alright.
Alright, capital. There's our equipment repair and auction line. That is my, uh, savings account. When we send stuff to the auction, that's the line that it goes back into. And I try not to mess with that too much unless it's absolutely necessary. Something goes down and we need to replace it immediately. That's my emergency funding to, for, for all equipment and vehicles. Traffic controllers is a new annual line. As I'm sure everyone in this room knows, our traffic signals are starting to age. They're starting to give me more and more problems and I'm, traffic controllers take forever to get here. It's, it's something I'd like to have on the shelf, so when one breaks, we go and get the one off the shelf, we can replace it. And we move forward that way. I'd like to get a couple every single year moving forward from now on, so we're never without them, waiting on them to show up. There are some other controllers that we have now that are, they're not making them anymore. And we're looking to get suitable replacements for them.
Um, will those, uh, traffic controller parts work in the pedestrian crosswalks? I know I, you're.
That's, that's part of the controller, part of that, yes.
Okay, so it'll help both.
The traffic light in the pads are, are one, are one, I don't want to say it's one unit, they're separate, but they work off the same, the same panel.
Perfect. Is, is that the issue that we're seeing over on the south side by Weiss with the pedestrian crosswalk or is that a different?
It could be. It, it's just, the pads are, they're very funny pieces of equipment. Sometimes the buttons just like to stick, sometimes they're corroded on the inside, sometimes they just go haywire. Nate called me on those, uh, a while back. We went and fixed them. A couple of weeks later, they're out again. We went, we checked them again. They all seem to be okay. We went, we checked them again. They all seemed to be okay and they were working properly after that. They're just, it's, it's something that we really have to mess with because everybody likes to, to poke at them. Uh, I've put in for a new street sweeper for this year. Um, our street sweepers are starting to age and I want to get one ordered in, in before they start completely dying on me. Um, I do plan on keeping the ones we have and just adding this one to it for now. And start rotating them out after that.
What's her, what's her total inventory of sweepers? Is there, are there two?
We have, we have three street sweepers. And a lot of the times, one of them is down for maintenance or has a problem. So we, we have three running a lot of the times, but always two. I'd like to have three running all the time with a backup.
Thanks.
Last year, we got a new transfer station trailer. It showed up the end of this summer. It's working great. Uh, now we need to replace the tractor that pulls that trailer. If you remember last year, I've, I had to come in and ask for money several times for our, our tractors, just to keep them moving. They're to the point now, I, I don't want to put any more money into them. I would like to get a new one. Replace one and keep one older one. So I can replace that one too, moving forward. That way we always have a tractor and a trailer to pull the stuff to landfill. And that keeps my actual garbage trucks out of the landfill here where they're supposed to be instead of wasting time driving back and forth. That's time, fuel, tires and all of that.
Is there, is there a formula or something that you're using to figure out when there's diminishing returns? Or is it a rule of thumb kind of best practice? How do you determine when, when it's?
So these tractors.
Good money after bad.
So these tractors, it's actually getting to the point where I can't find parts for them anymore. So it's, it's just time. They're, I want to say they're, I think they're 17 and 18 years old, I believe. Uh, after that, I'm asking for three light duty trucks. Some of my supervisor vehicles have gotten to the point where the frames are rusted and cannot be repaired. Two of them are beyond repair now and they're, I actually have supervisors sharing a vehicle at this point. They're just at the end of their useful life and need changed. I have in for two new plow and dump trucks. Again, we're replacing trucks that are 10 plus years old. I am not going to get rid of the ones I have right away because the time it takes to get trucks. So until I can kind of get a fleet where I feel comfortable getting rid of our aging trucks, I'm going to kind of hold on to them as backups. Um, I'm not going to pour a bunch of money into them. But if I have something like, if I have a truck go down and it's something that can be used, why this is getting fixed for a little while, I'd like to do that moving forward until I can replace the fleet to the point where I feel we don't need those anymore. And I have one garbage truck into my capital line, just to replace one that is aging out. And again, I'm trying to keep a rotation of getting, you know, one or two of these trucks every, every year or so. Just so I'm not trying to replace five or seven trucks all at once because it's so hard to get trucks.
And that's cue Councilman Hotchkiss on a plan?
I mean, it, it's. I think it'd be helpful for everybody to look at, uh, your, your current, current inventory of, of vehicles and equipment and then basically how your, what the lifecycle of those is as we're planning this budget and any other budget in the future.
With, with trucks and equipment, especially for me, the newer style equipment does not last as long as the old stuff did. With the technologies that is computer wise and stuff like that, I've been here and I've talked to you guys about how we can't fix certain things because it's proprietary software and, and things like that. That's a lot of the problem here too. I think things, we look at trucks and I, people automatically think, okay, new truck, we're good for 20 years. And that's just not the case anymore. Uh, I need to take a good, hard look at what the real life expectancy for these newer style trucks is. And I don't really have that yet. That's something I'm definitely looking at moving forward because trucks are very expensive. And it's, it's a large part of what we do and I have to have them moving on the street to keep everything clean, safe, snow removed and, and salted and things like that. So yes, I need to come up with a, a little bit better of an idea of how long a truck really lasts.
Yeah, I, I think there, there's got to be somebody who's, who's got an estimate on that for all of the different departments of public works across country. Somebody's, somebody's got to have a decent idea about what the newer vehicles are, what their shelf life is or their effective useful life. So that would be, yeah, it's something, it's got to be out there. Think, I think it'd be good to have that plan put together. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but it's just like the.
No, it's a legitimate, it's a legitimate question.
Is there anything that you wanted that is not represented in this budget?
Oh.
Still, still, still.
That's okay.
You can respond to Councilwoman.
That's okay.
Everything I need, I, I try to ask for only what I need. I try not to go above and beyond. I try to keep my budget tight to the point where we have what we need. And, and I think that's what this is. I'm getting, I asked for everything I need and I'm being given everything I need to, to do the jobs that we need to get done.
Is there anything that can make it better? Like?
Is there anything that can make it better? There, there's always something to make it better.
Like what?
I, I, I'd like 37 more guys. So we can, we can pick the garbage out of every street every day. As far as equipment, equipment wise here, for, for right now, this is everything that we really need to have.
Anything to increase capabilities though, or something you're farming out to repair or, or outside? I mean, the, the, the roller is a very good example. So a piece of equipment that thought we could, or we were happy renting until we, you know, found enough use for it and brought it in. Anything else like that going forward?
I, I was here earlier in the week talking about the skid steer. That, that's the only real thing that kind of
Okay.
Is not on this list that, uh, we're actually going to get, so.
So, uh, there's also, I, I don't know if this is me misremembering or if there's an error, but 207, all of the fees are all listed as refuse fees, even for DPW employees doing like painting and things. Is that correct or not correct? There's, so on 207, there's no fees at all listed as DPW fees. They're all listed as refuse. But the question would be, there's no, no, no changes in fees this year. I know you had.
No, no change in fees this year. No.
And then, uh, we had changed some last year though, I think for like electronic pickup and stuff. Has that had the desired effect at all or building materials actually, right? Was the, I think building materials was something that you were wanting to increase the fees for and things.
Building materials?
Yes, like plywood, if I remember correctly. Fees for picking up plywood stuff. We increased.
Oh, yeah, it was for, for construction debris, stuff like that. Yeah.
Any impact? Any?
I mean, not really. Uh, they're, they're paying the fees, so. Or when we tag them, it's, it's the same type of a deal. So no, it's no real impact.
So no reduction, but we're in theory at least collecting.
Yes.
Fees for effort.
Yes.
So we're at least breaking even on the cost of the pickup?
Yes.
Okay. And then back over to the right side, any, are those all supposed to be under refuse or some of those going to DPW or?
Sorry, I missed the first part of that.
Uh, so all the fees listed on 207 that, that, that I would think someone would be DPW fees or all listed as refuse fees only?
Right. I don't think it's changed. We didn't make any changes. Right. I mean, they were, they're the same as last year.
Okay.
If it's refuse, I mean.
We didn't have a DPW.
Slash DPW, it's pretty much all the same thing.
Fine. Any more thoughts, feelings, questions or concerns for?
Well, so this, now this is a pet peeve of mine. Back on page 39, uh, we've got the shared maintenance agreement with Brum County for the tripartite complex. Is that, it's currently budgeted, budgeted at $60,000. Does that, we just go straight to the county?
So I'm actually starting to, uh, get some feedback on this.
Amazing.
So, uh, this is the first, the last couple of months, we've actually been receiving some, some stuff. I kind of just left it alone because I'm, as you know, it's, it's been a struggle trying to figure out what's going on with that. We're finally starting to get feedback and get bills. So I just left it alone for this budget. Next year, we're going to have all the quarters worth of stuff in order. So I can give you a better idea of what that really should be.
Thank you.
The state did a, not a great job of telling us anything. And now because I've pushed, Nate's pushed, they're, they're actually, there's somebody actually responding to us at this point. So I can start seeing exactly what it is we're, we're paying for, what it is they're wanting. And then, and moving forward, I can actually tell you what it is. Since I.
I'm not going to get a half a million dollar bill.
At this job, it's been, it's been crickets.
Right, right. So, but like, so this season, the, all the posts around the parking lot got done. But the parking lot, we still have huge potholes in the parking lot and stuff. It's, you know.
I mean, they, they filled them the one day. No one was allowed to park here and they filled the holes the one day. So there was a.
An effort?
There was a concerted effort to fill buttholes in that parking lot.
Forever.
The, the posts weren't done in the most detailed manner, but they, yes, they were done.
True, I, I. They're a little rough still, but at least they're mostly whole and painted. Since we're on this sort of topic, do you have any idea who actually controls the corner? Uh, by where the, the flagpoles are and the 911 memorial and such are? It's got a bunch of asphalt on it.
The, the ones on, not on State Street, on Henry Street, that would be them.
Okay. All right. Because it already got dug up and asphalted instead of concrete back. And we, I don't know why, but.
I will, I will go take a look at it and, uh, I'll see what I can find.
Okay. Anyway, thank you for working on that. At least it's, I guess some response is better than what we've had so far. So good. All right. Again, any other things for DPW?
A general thank you.
Thank you.
All, all the offices today.
Really good, very thorough.
Been highly communicative with council.
Right. So again, we, I will ask for a motion that I don't want to, uh, close pages 36 to 45, 77 to 78, 79, 101 and the DPW items on 203 and 207. And I see no motion, so we will. And I can bullet.
I'll make the motion second.
Motion by Councilmember Middleton, second and by, I can catch it, Councilmember Matavetsky.